All right, let's call to order the work session for the Coaches County Board of Supervisors. Today's Thursday, June 26th. We're meeting at the Supervisors Hearing Room in Melville Lane in Bisbee. Pursuant to ARS 38431.02H, the public will have access to the meeting room 15 minutes prior to start of the meeting. Any item on this agenda is open for discussion. Members of the Coaches County Board of Supervisors will attend either in person or by Microsoft Teams. Members of the public may also attend this meeting via Microsoft Teams or the mobile app. Work sessions are a time for county staff to inform and discuss agenda items with the Board of Supervisors, and public comments will not be taken. We'll begin with a roll call. District one.
Crosby is here.
District two, is Ms. Gomez online? No, Ms. Gomez is not here. District three, Antonori is here. So Antonori and Crosby are in person and Ms. Gomez is absent. We will begin. Items for discussion will go to Ms. Gilman for an explanation of the first agenda item.
Sure. So we have a lot of items to discuss today. So before we get started, I wanted to ask the Board's permission to first talk, well, to go in the order of the library district, the flood control district, and then the regular board meeting, and then the jail district. We can use going to executive session for the jail district items, but I don't want to hold everybody else off.
All right, sounds good. So let's do that. Point of this.
I would also note that when we, prior to going into executive session, I have a few comments and three slides that Ms. Lowenstein was kind enough to prepare. And so before, as part of the discussion, and then prior to going into executive session, so we could put those on the big board.
Okay, got it. Okay, so we'll start with the library district. There's just consent and budget amendments, no action on that one.
Okay.
And no action on the flood control.
Well, that was.
Those are easy.
Yeah. All right.
Okay, so then we'll go to the regular board meeting.
Before we get up to flood control, real quick, Joe, you've mentioned you were working that rock wall, Gabion wall thing. Any update on that?
We have a draft resolution. We need to spend a little more time on it.
Okay, all right, I was just curious to know how that was going. All right, that's good.
So going to the regular meeting, like I said, there are quite a few things for discussion today.
Good.
Consent, is there any question as we review the consent?
Why are we giving ammunition to Homeland Security?
Wouldn't that catch your eye? So, yes, Teresa Rockridge is here to explain from adult probation, they have some.
Are we getting money in return for that? Well, can I get the 40, $14,000, 40 caliber ammunition?
Well, believe me, we really worked hard to find another county department that could use it. What had happened is adult probation changed the guns that they carried. So we had two types of ammunition. We have the training and then we have a duty. So when we changed the guns, the ammunition no longer worked.
So you changed calibers?
Yes.
So from 40 to?
Nine millimeter.
That's like a downgrade, ain't it? We didn't hurt it.
I'm not an expert on the type of guns.
All right, I would think, I think maybe go from 40 to 45. Instead of 40 to nine, but yeah.
Yeah, and we are kind of limited in the approved guns that we can carry.
Nine mil's cheaper than 42.
That could be, yeah. So we did check with the sheriff, we checked with our court security.
Sheriff doesn't carry, his guys don't carry 40 calibers?
I wasn't the one who spoke to him personally, but we were told that, no, they can't.
Sheriff's don't carry 40.
Oh, Frank, did you want to remove it off the agenda, the consent agenda, and not sell it, not give it away?
I don't know.
Well, we looked into getting a refund or selling it, but the cost to ship it far outweighed, you know, what we would get for it. So this was purchased with our probation fee account, so there wasn't any county money involved.
Could we dispose of it in another way without giving it to the, could we just auction it off? Could we put it on public surplus and in like lots of?
We did work with procurement, who was kind of like, you know, there wasn't much guidance.
Because of the political aspect or is it because of the legal aspect? I couldn't care less about the.
Yeah, we weren't really told, but I think because it was ammunition.
Well, how big a storage facility is needed for the amount of ammunition that we?
It's not terrible, but it's also nothing to use. It's just sitting. And we do the probation, the.
When we change back, or sell it rather than give it away and make some money off.
Well, we do, the adult probation department does have other agencies that are like law enforcement that we work closely with, and this is one of them. And so it was found that they could use it, and we thought.
I don't know, Frank. I don't know either. I don't feel.
Move it to action and that way.
So is this duty ammo or ball ammo for training?
I think it's a mix of both.
It's a mix of both.
Yeah.
Even more reason now to keep it.
So let's put it on action and then we can come back with more information.
And then in the meantime, you know, we'll do a little bit more digging, and perhaps it's something that we can find a storage space for.
I know. I'll even buy it, I'll even pay for it.
Yeah, so I will check again with procurement to see if we are allowed to, if they would take it and put it up for auction. I don't know.
Yeah, that might be an issue. That might be the issue that our, I don't know if procurement.
You can buy ammo on public surplus all the time, it's always on there.
Okay, we'll look into that deeper.
There's plenty of government auction websites that sell surplus ammo guns. You know, state law requires it to be sold now, auction guns and stuff. So we got to be careful on that, too. We might be, well, the, well, can't destroy it, that's what the statute says. Statute says we can't destroy guns or ammunition. We have to dispose of it by selling it or giving it to another government agency. So I think we're covered there, but that's, I know that's what the statute says. If I'd rather sell it and put it on public surplus, you know, 10 bucks a box, 20 round box, that's a lot of money, or at the very least trade it. Oh, yeah, at least trade it, yeah.
Around for nine mil.
Yeah, and like I said, we were looking into that by the company that we purchased from, and it was, again, the shipping of it.
Where's it at right now?
Find some agency, like Sierra Vista PD, I don't know what.
Yeah, yeah.
They want our 40, they buy us nine millimeter, we trade.
Okay, well, we'll do a little bit of homework before next Tuesday.
It's like muscle cars and guitars and stuff like that, you seem like, lose your ammo.
That's like 290 boxes, $20. You know, you're looking at like $6,200 of ammunition right there. All right, we'll look, we'll come back, we'll come back on that one. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number three is an acknowledgement of annexation petition from the City of Douglas for the sunny for an area, including the Sunnyside Fire District. And Denise Riden is here from our civil deputy's office to give us a little bit more information of that. It is on consent, but it's a different kind of thing that the board hasn't seen before, so I thought a little background would be helpful.
Well, this was, is this all port of entry related stuff?
Nope.
And then they're absorbing the fire district?
That's the question.
So, hello. Was a little surprised to be called up today, so I don't have a ton of information on this. But, and I am not a proponent or an objector.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We just simply got documents from the City of Douglas that said that they are attempting to annex some of, a portion of the fire district.
A portion of the fire district?
I believe that in 2022, they tried to do a larger portion and it didn't, somehow didn't get through the process, so now they're, this is a smaller portion of that amount. And for our purposes, it's just an acknowledgement that they've given us notice that they are taking these actions.
You're not approving or disapproving?
So it has nothing to do with county property for us?
No, not to my knowledge. Actually, special fire district would be, so it's the Sunnyside Special Fire District, and so I think that would take it outside the county, except that the county deals with special districts, and the City of Douglas is also part of the county, so.
Okay, it's a gray area.
Yeah, that's a typical.
Well, I mean, if they're doing the whole fire district, they're required to reimburse the district for all the property. If they annex them, they got to pay, they got to buy all the, so how do we do?
There's still some discussions going on with the assessors' office and the number of signatures, just different, they're doing, there's different departments doing an evaluation of this petition.
Tax is going to change, they're going to go from the fire district tax to the City Douglas.
So we're not at a position of saying, yes, this is a good, this is good deal or not, we're just saying.
Standing in the way.
Yes, we do.
We don't have, we don't have anything to approve of. They can do whatever the hell they want, as long as they get the 50% of the property value and.
We're just saying the board received this information.
Yeah, okay.
And I am more than happy to go into an executive session and talk about all the steps that have to be taken. At this point, we are just acknowledging the notice, this part of a statute, that we got notice from them that they are taking this.
We're just acknowledging that we know they're doing, that's it.
We could, we could take it off the consent agenda and allow Denise to add her.
I think we need to do that. I think, I think if we just acknowledge it, because that's all this is, we're just saying, yeah, thanks, we got, we got the message, and then we could do a work session to.
Down the road.
Down the road to get, when they start going down the road, right? This is just an acknowledgement, this is, it's like a registered mail.
Basically, and that's why it's really important, you know, I'm not here to, I'm not here for the City of Douglas or a proposal, so.
So we're just acknowledging, they sent us the heads up and say, okay, thanks, we got it.
Basically.
And then we'll figure it out as it moves along.
Yeah, I like your certified mail.
Very.
You may have already won.
All right, thanks so much.
Thank you.
All right, next, next one, county schools.
Yeah, so this is a, this item will probably be moved from consent to action because it is a new contract with a vendor that we are already using for this program in a different, this is additional services that the vendor will be providing, so it's not a contract. Cynthia Meyer is here.
Oh, hey, Doctor, how's it going? Hey. We need to get some, I need to get some of these documents. So this is for the approval of the contract with Navigate 360 for the technology piece to continue the emergency management suite or the school safety consortium technology platform. Half of it was built out through the emergency management suite with Sheriff's Office funding, and then in order to add the behavioral health, I needed to apply for another grant to get money to do the behavioral health end of it. And so this is for that second part of the platform that covers the behavioral health technology, which includes the anonymous tip reporting tool, the threat assessment management training, and then a train the trainer program for the threat assessment, as well as suicide prevention and the case management software that will go into the schools to help them manage the behavioral threat assessment.
Would you care to tell us about what types of tips and what types of, are we talking about violence or what?
Yeah, so we're talking about any, it's an anonymous tip reporting tool that will be manned by the Sandy Hook Promise Crisis Center. All of the research shows that in order for these anonymous tip lines to work in schools, that it really has to be anonymous.
Independent, not connected in any.
Yeah, it can't be connected in any way to the county. So any tip can really go through there. The reason why we're using it is for bullying prevention and for other reports that just seem to, kids are not reporting to family members, to school administrators, and to other, you know, primary caregivers and their families. So suicide, bullying, other issues that are going on in the school, and they can use it for anything.
Also count that, even if there's a tip line to the police department, because the police department and these small cities, they're so small, they can pinpoint who said it.
Sure.
And that, again, is a detriment for students not to say anything.
Right.
Because there's a lot of, all the things that's happening so far that we've investigated, it's because of fear that somebody's sister, brother, cousin knows somebody in certain places and it stops them from reporting. If they, and this, our students that you met last week, they are 100% behind this and they think this is the way.
Yeah. Even with the like, federal usages, how many tips, excuse, crap. How many tips, how many tips a week or month you're planning on?
So we really have no way to gauge that, and again, having the, you know, Sandy Hook Promise Crisis Center field those calls that really, whether it's, you know, 500 in a week or 50 in a week from all the school districts throughout the county, they're going to be responsible for taking care of that. Douglas Unified School District had grant funding last year and attempted to use the tip line just within the Douglas Unified School District. The one challenge, which is why we waited to add the tip line, was we knew that we weren't going to be putting school officials in charge of manning the tip line, which is what they had to do in Douglas because they couldn't afford to utilize the crisis center. And they told me they had on the average, probably like anywhere between 10 and 20 tips a week, depending on, depending on what time of year it was, right? Around the holidays, during spring break, those times there always seems to be an uptick in the reports. So, yeah, and inside the packets, just so you know what's in here, I realized that when we had the grant approved, it was in December, before some of you were actually here on the Board of Supervisors. So on the left-hand side, you'll see the actual narrative for what the grant is about, if you want to read that in your leisure time. And then this one over on the right is the actual full grant packet submission, and the red tab is where we talk about the procurement piece with Navigate 360, which is the contract we're looking to get approved today.
So of the 160, 163K, what, how much of that is, that's just the full, that's what we're getting? The grant is 163K?
No, the grant is.
The current total cost is 163.
$947,000 we got for the grant.
So this is only to pay for the?
The technology services and the consulting piece that we're using to do the assessment in the different school districts for what their needs are related to the school safety and the anonymous tip reporting tool. Yes, sir.
Does the information go through someplace in San Diego? You said San Diego?
It's Sandy Hook Promise.
Sandy Hook, okay.
Yeah, Sandy Hook Promise Crisis Center, yep.
Any connection to the, yeah?
Yeah, that's, that's how, actually, how that crisis center started, and they also provide a lot of free educational tools and systems for the school district related to school violence and behavioral issues and suicide prevention as well. So, and the big piece of the grant and the funding that we're using to navigate 364 other than the tip line is the behavioral threat assessment, which one of the challenges the schools have are the kids that are kind of on that pathway to violence or kind of in a situation where they're bullying other students and the way that the schools are managing and tracking these student behaviors, and they're really not doing it in a way that is sustainable or linear and shareable with information. So what this grant is going to allow them to do is to have a case management platform so that when they utilize the behavioral threat assessments with these kids that are having challenges, they'll be able to keep track of everything without the information falling off the plate. And it will also allow with school choice, when a kid shifts to another school, they will be able to share that information with another school, so they won't be starting all over again.
And it's not that the schools aren't doing their jobs, it's just that their job is to educate students. All the social issues that are popping up throughout this timeline, throughout history that we live in, we have to augment and support and serve them so that they can continue to teach and not totally put all of their time into this. So that's what one of our jobs in, and the county superintendent's office do, is to support and augment anything that the schools and the county needs, and this is one of them.
Okay, any questions? No, no. Okay, thank you, ladies.
Thank you, Doctor.
All right, five elections, we do the party breakout on these or no?
There isn't any.
Three PCs?
There is, oh, it's not attached, but yes, there is an exhibit, it shows that they're.
Yeah, usually it says like, two Republican, one Democrat, or one Libertarian, or whatever.
Probably on agenda.
Yeah, we can make that.
All right.
And the next item is the poll workers for the CD7 elections. This would be an attachment as well, an agenda quick, and when the final agenda is posted, they'll be attached, full list of names of poll workers for Palominas, Douglas, and Bisbee vote centers, as well as early board and emergency early board of county staff should we need to pull additional staff in to cover early board.
Okay, you're talking about signature verifiers?
No, that's done at the recorder's office.
Okay.
So early board is when we get the mail, the early votes from mail, by mail in, opening those, preparing them for tabulation.
Okay, but it does not require a signature of the information?
The recorder's office does that before they send them over to elections office. So the early board members do not do that.
Okay, and since we're talking about a very small portion of the geographical county having to do with this congressional race, you don't foresee the need for additional, for instance, signature verifiers, we could talk about.
That would be the recorder's office decision, so not the elections department. And we have not received such a request from the recorder's office.
Well, I've told him that we're not going to scrap and whatever he needs, and that goes for elections also.
So that's what that list will, you will see. Number seven, seven, eight, and nine are abandonments of right-of-way in various parts of the county. Information was sent out to residents in the area, and there was no opposition, so these resolutions were put on consent, since there's not any opposition from the committee. But Jackie's here, can I make a question?
You mean Kathy?
No, Jackie wants to.
So I had a nice discussion last weekend about easements and roads in certain parts of the county and people gating them and blocking them and denying access to Forest Service and State Trust Land for hikers, campers, hunters, and whatnot. Does that have any impact here? Are you blocking off by abandoning these easements or?
No.
We're not going to maintain them anymore?
These aren't, these aren't maintained. The one that's the unnamed road, that, these aren't really roads. These are by plat, an easement, or they're not an easement, they're dedicated right-of-way from a plat. So it's a dedicated right-of-way, so it's county property, but it's not really a road, there's not, you can't physically drive on it because it's vegetated. And so these are between people's properties. So the first way, one on Wachuka Drive that's over in Palominas, and it is, the property owner owns all the parcels each side of it, and so then he can take it and combine it into one parcel, so to put a bit, it'll take that public road and put it on the tax parcel. And then the unnamed one in McNeil, it was an easement at one time that's, you know, they're not needed for roads. If we ever abandon a road that is needed, then we do make sure that they still have access to public lands, but none of these are going to public lands.
All right, well, I just want to make sure we're not blocking access off, and some guy throws a chain up and keeps me from scooting down there to ATV during hunting season, that's all.
No, when we get complaints of people blocking public roads, even if it's maintained or not maintained, we do send a letter to the property owner, whoever's trying to block it, that they're not allowed to do that. You can't put a gate up on an ingress egress easement.
But the argument is that they're claiming they're private roads, the county doesn't have easements, but they've been there for 100 years, and there's a thing called prescriptive easements. I've got a little education on this this weekend, whereby, particularly with access to state and federal lands for people to go up there, but there are several people now that are trying to assert their private property rights, because people are driving through and they're not maintaining the road, you know, the county doesn't maintain the road, I got to maintain the road, it's my road, it's my neighbor's road, you know, we're going to put a gate up and keep these people from going down the, going down the road, but then it's like, well, this has been a road for 100 years, and it grants access to Forest Service, it falls under, I forgot what.
2477.
There's a federal statute, and I was trying to find in my.
The 2477?
Yeah.
That's 2477 if it's on federal property, if it's on federal land, there is a 2477, and we do have, and we get that from, on state land and federal lands, and we do have right-of-way that we've gotten on that, and the declare a wide, a right-of-way width of 66 feet. But if it's a prescriptive right over someone's private property, then to get a prescriptive right, you would have to go to court, because then a judge would have to say, yes, you do have a prescriptive right.
Okay.
So that would be a court, that would be a legal matter for prescriptive rights on private property. But even on private property, when we have an easement, because if you go back to the state statutes from Arizona, that's starting back in 1903, and then 1927, there's more updated ones, we could have, the county has a prescriptive right on a lot of our roads, we do not have perfected right-of-way, it's still private property, and at some point we will have to pay for that right-of-way, because the government can't take private property, even if it's been there for 100 years. We have the right to use it, but at some point we, they can require us to pay for that property. And that's what we're doing on Davis Road.
Right, right.
And Milton Road.
Davidson, your neighborhood, right, down by you.
One's on what else? Like she said there.
McNeil, Gomez's Drive, okay, all right.
Moving on to public hearings, we have a liquor license, those are pretty standard, and then Development Services is putting forth their zoning ordinance, it's already gone through, planning and zoning, and this is related to the various conversations that we had earlier this year with residents that were kind of controversial rezonings or downzoning.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. This is like the, the issue with Pierce, with that abandoned subdivision stuff?
Yes.
Okay, cool.
So attached to that will be, to that item, an agenda quick will be a staff memo and several exhibits for the board to review before adopting that ordinance to address that issue. We did say that we would, Development Services did say they would come back in July, so July first, they're back with it.
Oh, good, okay.
On action, we have the committee appointments for the Board of Supervisors. In your folder, there is a draft of the committee appointment. If there's anything you would like us to remove, we can do that before we post the final agenda and bring it to the board.
We're going to look at these, Tom. Okay. And I'll say what we wanted to, since we're in open meetings, be member, what we didn't want to be members, but we'll have to vote on it, but I mean, Kathleen, we're here to go some of this, some of this stuff.
I know in the past, the board expressed some concern, we'll start from the bottom maybe and go up. The Upper San Pedro Partnership has been a source of concern for the board. We do pay $10,000 in a partnership IGA we have with the City of Sierra Vista to support that. The Port Wachuka does pay a significant contribution to the Upper San Pedro Partnership as well.
But they shouldn't.
Now, there's, among staff and the city, we've talked about if the county were to leave that executive committee and the advisory commission, what would that do? There are other mechanisms for the county to have participation in the water recharge projects or other.
If you just give them a dollar. Give them a dollar and they have to give you all their meeting minutes.
The Upper San, yeah, then.
If you would want them, well, they would still change the IGA.
Would change the IGA.
So they'd have to re, reapprove it, so.
There's also, were you done talking about the San Pedro Partnership?
Sure. Sure.
Then the next one, Sierra Vista Metropolitan Planning Organization, which was a, that was a thing that our former development guy, Mr. Coxworth was a big fan of that. However, it was established fraudulently, like so many things, by, by starting it in Sierra Vista, saying this is, this is a mandate by the governor. Well, you, the governor doesn't do that in the first place. And then they drew the boundary line, the city council drew the boundary line outside the, the boundaries of Sierra Vista, which they didn't have the, the authority to do also to establish it to get the population numbers up to.
It's a free money outfit.
You know, they, they've got grants coming in. What I've always feared from them is that they're going to institute smog tests or something like that. And everybody said, oh, this is a great idea, free money, let's make everybody get smog tests. It'll be good for the economy and businesses and stuff like that. So I'm just pointing it out to you that it is a suspect in origin. And it is, it just being a free money thing, it's going to have, at some point they're going to come in with some strings on whatever it is the free money is.
I mean, are we bound by that dollar amount? Could we like knock it down?
We do have an IGA or an agreement with them by which the fees are determined.
Is it a percentage of everybody else that's chipping in? Is that what it is?
I believe so. Jackie, Jackie Watkins has served on their, their technical committee and we will move closely with them because this group does help with funding for roads.
So the Serviced MPO, so we're a part of SEGO, Southeast Arizona Government Association. So the roads are either going to be in Serviced MPO or SEGO. Molson Road is in the Serviced MPO area. And so the Serviced MPO, we do pay funds, but there's contributions in kind. So we have a set amount of dollars we pay, but every time we do any work on any of our projects in that area, we do get credit for that. So we don't actually pay all this money all the time. And the federal government gives A dot X amount of dollars. That, those dollars are sent out to the MPOs or the SEGOs to distribute to all the member agencies. And that's why when the Serviced MPO was a smaller area, it's always had the area around Sierra Vista. And then it also now includes Wachuka City and goes up towards Benson. So it's, the roads are going to be either in a MPO or the SEGO. And this is, when it's in the MPO, then we're only competing against Sierra Vista and Wachuka City for projects. In SEGO, it's Cochise, Graham, Greenlee, Santa Cruz Counties, and then all the agencies in SEGO that get, and there's like two or three million dollars that SEGO gets every year. And so that's where we get funds and.
Do they write grants or something to get federal dollars or?
No, they get, they get a X amount of dollars. And I, I'm not sure, I think Serviced MPO gets around a million or six hundred thousand a year. So the feds give A dot money and goes through to the agencies. And then all the agencies in that Sierra Vista MPO would be Sierra Vista, Wachuka City and Cochise County. We take that money and divide it up into projects in our area. So it's not a grant, they help us write grants or they help us get grants. But the main focus is the money that they already get from the federal government. That's allotted to the different agencies.
If it's fixing roads.
It never should have left here to begin with, right? Like so many other things, and it's kind of like tax deductions, which although I'm against tax deductions, I took them when I had kids or because they do, they exist. And so this exists, but like any other grant, it's going to come through with strings attached to it. And if it crosses existing jurisdictional political lines, then you're growing government by having some entity that say, oh, we're the stakeholders. We're going to get together on this and now we've got a little pot of money to, to figure out how we're going to use it and so on and so forth. So there, there's a lot of bad things about it. And, and just like anything that there's free money that left here and it's coming back with strings attached, there's got to be strings attached because somebody has a great idea on what we should be doing that we're not doing already. And that's just how I feel.
Are we, what's the, what's the, Sharon, what's the deal with the voting on this? Are we approving all of this or just the membership, the bodies? We're not approving the money or we are approving?
So you're approving that we belong to these organizations and that we're, the clerk of the board is then going to pay these membership dues and various.
What's the due date on that decision?
Uh, the Sierra Vista MPO, they have various due dates. We typically do it at the beginning of the fiscal year. That way the clerk can pay them as they come in throughout the fiscal year. Sierra Vista MPO typically sends it early in the fiscal year, July or August.
I mean, probably most of these organizations fall into the description, in my opinion, that I told you about. You're going to have the stakeholders and they're going to get together and they're going to say, we're the stakeholders and we have this little pot of money. We're going to decide how we're going to distribute it. Because that's just the way it operates.
Yeah, I mean, the A dot would not send, I don't think directly the money to Cochise County. They send it to the MPO, right? Through the federal government, it's all these various.
And what would they, how would they give away money if the MPO wasn't there?
That's a good question. I would.
If the, if that, if Serviced MPO was not there, that, those funds would go to SEGO, to SEGO. So if we don't, if we're not a member of SEGO, then the other counties and agencies would use the portion that we could have used.
That was a greatly philosophical question. And just like I said about tax deductions that it's just, it's just tax shifting, right? You deduct your, you know, you got kids and you're going to take a tax deduction, then I get to subsidize your kids and vice versa with my taxes. So like I said, I, I bring it up just because of the potential for ne'er do wells to come in and say, if you want this money, you got to do what we say.
And the funds originally would be from the federal portion of the gas tax. And additional from Congress, they always spend more than they have for the gas tax.
We have a electric vehicle assessment program.
I know, we need one.
All right.
Uh, then this become, that's just verifying that I'll be the representative on the JPA versus, has the IGA. Says the board can appoint the representative. Uh, C cap, Southeast Arizona Communicate, Community Action Plan. Don't know if you've had the opportunity to go to any of those meetings yet, they don't meet often, Supervisor Antonori.
We're not paying them anything, so.
No.
We could leave that there.
And Southeast Arizona Economic Development Group. The nominal fee of a hundred and fifty dollars to participate.
Okay.
In their discussions and meetings. Um, the Southern Arizona Contractors Association, Joe's on that. Do we, do you have a desire to stay in that membership?
Not necessarily.
Not been one that.
Have you noted that Mr. Coxworth is still a member of SEGO, it looks like, about fifth from the bottom?
Oh, that needs to be updated. That's SEGO Executive Committee, yep.
Yeah, we, we talked about that and we were going to go to the next one and decide who's going to be the side of that one.
Right. I don't know, maybe we should pull this one off.
You want to have a longer work session about it?
Yeah, what do you think? I don't think we should just vote this out. So, yeah, let's.
Yeah, I mean, there's places to save money.
Yeah, that's what I agree, I think so too. So we'll, and I'd like Kathleen to be here.
Okay.
Um, as well, Ms. Gomez, Supervisor Gomez.
Here. We will schedule a separate work session, a discussion.
All right, cool, thanks.
Mm hmm.
Tell Laura not to write any checks.
We'll do it soon, don't you?
Similarly, Wachuka fifty, okay? Yeah, that, so we had this congressman and he's the guy who started the sprinkle. And Colby.
Colby.
Okay, so Colby starts the sprinkle in eighty eight or whenever it was. And, you know, makes, in my opinion, a big disaster out of everything having to do with the fort and, and lawsuits having to do with water ombrels and leopard frogs and everything else. And then, and then he comes back after retiring from government service.
Gets a job.
Lobbyist, be the lobbyist for, to, to lobby against what he started in eighty eight. I just don't think it's right.
Yeah, and again, this is where we had the meeting where we told the fort that, and they need to assert themselves. I mean, couldn't be better to create that incentive. So, all right, all right, we'll table that.
Okay. The next item fourteen is the adopt the resolution twenty five sixteen for public hearing to continue, to consider the continued establishment of the jail district. I don't think we need to go into an executive session necessarily for this one. It's, it'll be attached to Agenda Quick for your review. The intent behind it is for to cover statutory requirements since we're having an election for the jail district and on November fourth. It calls into question, I guess, the, the fact that the previous board did establish a jail district in twenty twenty two, but now we're having another election. So we're covering that we want to continue that establishment and that the jail district tax.
I'm going to defer to Mr. Crosby on this one. It is a mess, it is. And I'm not sure exactly how to address that, but, uh, so this is, I wonder if Ms. Lowenstein, do you have that slide that was forty eight dash four thousand and one handed by any chance?
Is this, but this is related to the ballot language, I think.
We're talking, so that, that's a separate resolution to talk about the ballot language. And I think that that's what you want to refer to in this. I, I would probably want to save this for the jail district agenda because this relates to a separate agenda. I think we should, maybe we should just pause this until we get to that ballot language.
So what is this then?
So that this is simply affirming the continuation of it. The statute requires that we hold a public hearing. So the supervisors, you all can confirm the public necessity of having a jail district. It already exists. We are, the, because the statute requires it, we think it's most prudent that we hold another public hearing. We just do it again to confirm and we're just, you know, we're checking the statutory formalities. And this is, we just want to make sure that we're following statute.
This was like reference Title forty eight?
Yes. Forty eight, four thousand one.
Well, thank you, matter of fact. So when are we going to look at that? Because I wanted it up on a big board for everybody to see.
When we get to the jail districts, agenda.
Sounds good.
So this is a public hearing on August fifth at ten AM here to allow public comment on the continuation
of the establishment.
The previous one, not necessarily the one that will occur after November.
So once.
Because we're still technically, the old one is still technically in effect.
Yes, the old one's still in effect and the legislature didn't contemplate this unique situation. And so we're, and so we're, uh, we think it's best that we just hold a hearing to confirm the continued establishment of the jail district.
Okay, so, and, and basically it's because the courts, all they did was address the ten or eleven thousand and they didn't address all of the other messed up stuff.
Right.
About the establishment of the district to begin with. And so we've talked about that, one of the jail districts.
All right, all right. Just, just leave it on there because it's a legal.
Put a pin in that.
Yeah, yeah.
Put a pin in that, come back to that.
Pin. All right.
Number fifteen is a special item.
For the treasurer.
Yes, so the county treasurer has asked that we dedicate archives in memory of an employee who have passed away recently who had a great hand in establishing archives. So we have a proclamation and I'm sure Cap, Super Treasurer Trey Wick would greatly appreciate the board's recognition of that.
Good morning. I don't know if you have any questions for me.
No, we don't, we haven't, I know, I talked to you the other day.
Yeah, you know, you're kind of messy when I get into this too much. But, um, and I, I, we, we have placed the sign above the archive's door. It actually reflects that it is the Kevin Pyle's Legacy Archives and Hall of History. Because if you've ever been to the archives building, that entire hallway is full of nothing but pictures of the history of Cochise County. And Kevin printed and hung and designed the entire hallway all by himself. And I, I just want to make sure that that's acknowledged. Plus, yeah, getting there. Unfortunately, you guys are not available to attend. Um, I'm going to do the dedication on the thirtieth, but I believe you're at Camp Naco to do something with that situation. And so I know you're not able to attend, but so we're going to go ahead and do the dedication. But I, I wanted kind of your blessing in, in the form of a proclamation that I wanted to make it a countywide acknowledgement of his service and his dedication to the county.
So you will read this at the meeting? Will you read the proclamation?
If you'd like me to.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You just want to make me.
Somebody reads the proclamation, that's the whole point of the proclamation. We are proclaiming.
Yes, I would be very happy to. I will, I also want to put big thank yous to Ms. Lowenstein. She actually helped write it and it's just beautiful and very touching.
So, well, you don't mind reading it?
Nope, nope. I, I will gird my loins and I will be more, more together to do it.
Well, you can have somebody else read it. I mean, I just, I just, I think it'd be fitting to show respect to Mr. Piles that we read the proclamation into the, into the record and everything.
I would, I'm honored to do so.
Rather than just a motion to approve the proclamation, we should.
Nope, nope, you guys have had my back on this whole, whole concept and I, I'm very, very grateful, truly.
I don't know if you want to have his family here.
I, I'm working on it.
Yeah, great.
Well, Brian will be here for work, so he will be here. I'm kidding, he, he also works at my office.
Definitely do that.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Sixteen.
Sixteen.
Rolling Hill subdivision. Okay, yeah.
I'm not sure about.
So this is the first time this board has seen a plat abandonment.
All right.
And it's combined with amended assurance agreement, which I believe you have seen. So I prepared a short PowerPoint talking about the location. It's in District Three in Moscow.
Where is this at?
Uh, Moscow, a little west of Benson. It's in your district. Yeah, I talked about the phasing beneficiaries. I show the proposed plats, provide a timeline, discuss impact and provide a recommendation.
Good.
It, it's not a public hearing, so if you have questions.
Your associates and how a hammer going, good drainage, storm drains if they're needed, stuff like that. Okay. Because otherwise somebody will say, how come those plenty people let this happen? Gravity.
Yeah, that's right.
That's, that's fine.
Again, it's a ban, so there will be less developed area, so contributing to stormwater.
You're, you're.
Yeah, I know, that's a, I'm get smart on it, but I know, I'm, I'm glad, I like those neighborhoods that have lots of space.
Yeah.
That's the way it's going to be, isn't it?
Mm hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. So thank you. And then, uh, appreciate it. I think that's, that's all we got. And then the next one was the lease agreement, is that you too?
That's me too, yeah. So you, you've heard this before, after it came to the board, you guys approved it anonymously or unanimously.
I thought we did.
You did, you did. I had to transmit it to the FAA and they had some requests to amend. Uh, it's a public.
Film studio in a hangar, the FAA had a.
It's a public airport and recipient of federal funding, so it's subject to FAA oversight. And they can impose specific requirements on lease agreements under FAA grant assurances and federal law. So I have amended the proposed lease. I've transmitted it to the FAA, they've agreed to it. So I just need to send it back to you guys.
They strained on the free money.
And again.
What's the nature of the?
It's a film studio.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a.
It is a film studio, but it's a non-aeronautical use.
That's true.
And that's, that's the issue, so I inserted some.
I guess they can't open the door out this way onto the taxiway or they can't drive their stagecoaches and stuff on the runway and. And, you know, I guess that's what this.
They can't, but the most important thing to them was the interim use policy language, which was.
Call the, call the tower. I got you.
I'll have a PowerPoint that gives the location, background changes to the lease key points and recommendation.
I don't think that's a problem. All right. All right, next one, help and social services.
This is a intergovernmental agreement to provide funding for the health of free physician and behavioral health tech and eight existing physicians within the health department through the state.
Yes, good morning. I'm Amanda. I oversee this grant. This is a hundred percent grant funded, this IGA. And this would be our eleventh year in this grant. And what we would be signing for right now is the first year of a five-year cycle. And this grant oversees tobacco prevention, chronic disease prevention, teen pregnancy prevention, youth mental health first aid and suicide mortality review.
I thought we were going to tell you about something else like the last time, but that's okay. All right. Any, I don't have any questions here. No question. No question. Thank you. Thank you.
And then CCOM has a nine-one-one program grant agreement this week for almost three hundred thousand dollars.
Ooh.
Looks like they're appearing.
We have from CCOM.
Do you have information on this, Joe?
Yeah, if you have any questions on it. No, I, is this just to cover the cost of the system?
Of the phone system.
The nine-one-one system, phone system?
Yes, sir.
Since I recently used CCOM myself on my collision.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, they answered the phone and they transferred me to DPS. Now we're going to transfer you to DPS. That's exactly, that was my extent of my encounter with CCOM. Yeah, so I used it. So I used nine-one-one and I used the, so it works.
So somebody came out and took pictures and gave you good service.
The DPS, man, I got it handed to DPS. Yeah, definitely did. Good, good job. Great, great job. All right. Um, now, state federal, again, I, I, you know, we had our Republican Lincoln Day dinner on Saturday and I spent like fifteen, twenty minutes talking to Speaker Montenegro about this budget issue. And I did not get a very good, warm fuzzy from him on how things are going to go. And then you saw last week, the drama last week, actually this week too, actually Wednesday. They passed the skinny budget or continuing resolution and the governor vetoed it twenty minutes after they passed it. And then I saw the Senate president said he was going to stay there this weekend, bring the Senate. He signed a die to Senate, but then he brought them back. It has never happened before. Usually what happens, you have a mutual signee die where the Senate sends a notification team over to the House. The House sends a team over to the Senate and say they're ready to conclude their business. And it's kind of like this mutual deal.
How do you call them back in in about two thirds?
He unilaterally signed a die, which I don't think officially resulted in a signee die because the House didn't sign a die. So.
Karen Fanchin.
I know, I know. So, so he brought everybody back Wednesday to vote the skinny budget out, which they did. So the House passed the skinny budget, then the Senate came back, passed the skinny budget, and then went to the governor fifteen minutes later, it was vetoed. So now both the Speaker and the Senate President have agreed to begin negotiating with the governor to try to get this done before Monday, which means they're going to be there this weekend, in all likelihood, negotiating this and probably vote on it on Monday, which will be June thirtieth, the day before, day before.
What happens to this legislation when they call themselves into possession outside the parameters of the rules?
Well, the signee die evidently wasn't valid unless both houses do it. So I guess they got around it through that technicality. But, but from what I understand, they are a hundred miles apart. So a lot of it deals with this three hundred million difference in spending. There was a, House wanted to make it a contingency fund to cover Doge effects from Doge, future Doge issues that will roll down with the state. It's, 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 there's like, I guess, six hundred million dollars of extra money, surplus, I'm sorry. So they got about a six hundred million dollar surplus. So the House spent about three hundred million of that and then wanted the other three hundred million to deal with Doge effects. What ended up happening was the Senate and the governor negotiated a budget and ended up spending the full six hundred million dollar surplus, leaving no money, no money for Doge effects. They spent the surplus, right? They spent it. So the House had harp, has heartburn with that. So the deal was supposed to be to try to split the baby to go to a hundred and fifty, but the House totally rejected that because they said they already split the baby, which was the six hundred to three hundred. The problem is the three hundred is all Republican spending. And that the three hundred they want to cut is all the governor's spending. So that obviously instantly creates a headbutting situation.
What's the total budget that the legislature is responsible for? And what is the total amount of money that the governor is?
Oh, she, she gets, she gets to spend more than half of the federal dollars or the money that comes in the state without legislative approval, which is, oh God, I can't remember.
It was like two to one, three to one.
Yeah, it's, 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 it's right now, I think it's half because the legislature's increased spending dramatically. So the budget used to be like twelve, thirteen billion back then. Now we're up to seventeen billion, eighteen billion. So it's.
She has twice that.
Yeah, she's, she's got about twenty, twenty billion that she can spend discretionary without legislative approval. But on the actual budget, the seventeen point, I forgot what it is, off time, I had seventeen point eight billion dollar budget. We're talking about a point three here, which is three hundred million dollars. There, that's what they're fighting over. Uh, three hundred million out of a seventeen billion dollar budget. So, you know, what would need to happen, this is just me speaking, is they need to take that full six hundred. If they really want to shave three hundred off, the House is going to have to take a hundred and fifty million of the three hundred that they spent for their Republican stuff and give that to the governor. And then say, okay, let's, let's cut, that's the compromise. I don't know if it'll fly, but they'll say, all right, let's do this. We'll take out a hundred and fifty out of our three hundred million that we spent on Republican expenditures and we'll give the governor a hundred and fifty of that if she pulls her other three hundred off. So she ends up getting a hundred and fifty to three hundred, which I would think would be, if I were there, that would be the way I'd do it. But I don't think it's going to fly because some of those Republican spending initiatives are for like ESAs and stuff like that. So there's, there's going to be, I don't know what's going to happen. And Montenegro doesn't know what's going to happen. He's trying to keep a caucus together. He's got two votes to spare. And he's got the Freedom Caucus and everybody up there. He doesn't, he doesn't think he can cobble the votes together unless they get those cuts. And then the Senate president is trying to get done so he can go campaign for Attorney General. He's trying to get out the door as quickly as he can get this over with. So he's already cut that deal with the governor. You know, and she thinks she's got two thirds of the government already on board and it's just that one third that's being the problem. So I guess she wants to muscle everybody up against the, the deadline, which, you know, really doesn't bother them much. It bothers us a lot because all that funding that comes to the counties and the cities does not come on July first. So all the stuff that we put in our budget will not, including HRF money and health department money and money for the sheriff's department and all that money does not show up on July first.
The governor did not have that.
We, we ran, and they ran it again this year. They run the bill every year to require all appropriations to originate in the state house. And every year it goes that way.
What are the Doges or whoever, what are they doing to the governor's grants that she would otherwise get?
I don't know. I, I couldn't tell you. I mean, I'm sure there's an analyst up there that could, that could give you, but they're, they're looking at the direct impacts to the general fund that come from the federal government that may get dogged as well. So of the, let's just say the state gets somewhere around fifty billion dollars total. You know, both, you know, how much of that is going to get cut? I don't know. They're, they're concerned that they could lose up to a billion dollars due to Doge cuts. So that's why they wanted to have that, that reserve, but.
A hard time to budget.
Yeah, yeah. So, so what, what, it's, it's the trickle down effect, right?
Or lack thereof.
Well, you know, lack thereof, right? So the, the state's got to worry about what the feds are going to do, right? Because the feds are going to cut all this funding through Doge. It's going to hit the state. So they wanted to have money in reserve, but no, they ended up spending it all. So there is no reserve to deal with if there is Doge cuts. And so now we're now dealing with the, you know, since they don't have a budget. I don't know what our plan is, but I don't know. Are we, are we going to just pay bills out of the contingency and they get reimbursed? How do we do this? If we go, say we go two months with no budget and we don't get any money for two months, how do we?
We, it is unprecedented. I think we have.
No, it has never happened in the history of the state.
We're not even sure what, we haven't heard from agencies, how they're preparing and what exactly will come through and won't. We don't, we don't know.
I mean, well, agencies like ADAT will just stop, right? But, but other agencies like public safety, you can't just stop, you know, they'll just, yeah, ADAT will just stop paving roads. But I mean, you know, what about DPS? What about our sheriff's department? What about, you know, the, the bad impact that we get from the state, right?
Yeah, we'll have to do the same analysis of what can we continue with, what do we, you know?
Right. I mean, I mean, we're talking about Tuesday. We're talking about less than a week away here, right? So today's, today's the twenty-sixth.
We do have a contingency to, to keep us moving a little bit, but.
But we have asked agencies, but we're not getting replies to really know what the impact will be. I mean, to a certain degree, we have general fund money is general fund money. We're not reliant, but it's when they're the grants that we're most concerned about.
Which are half the budget.
Because general fund money is local money, right? Like our property tax revenue is local. It's not dependent on.
Right, right. We've got money to keep the lights on for certain aspects, but we do, we do get a chunk of change from the state, especially HRF money.
HRF money, health department money.
Yeah.
Sheriff's office, of course.
Well, he's, he gets a bunch of grants, yeah.
Some of those are reimbursable, though we spend and then we request reimbursement and the concern is how, how long to wait.
I mean, they'll, they'll, they'll get something passed, but I think the, the brinksmanship is going to continue until the pain level gets to a point where neither side can put up with it anymore. So, I mean, I know the governor's poll numbers are already not above fifty. So she's probably not going to, I mean, I think that's what the Republicans are counting on is that it'll hit her harder than it will hit them. But she's got agreement with the Senate, so she's going to blame the House for the problem. So we'll see what happens. I don't, I don't. It's going to be an interesting, interesting week. The big, beautiful bill ran into some parliamentary procedure problems yesterday. Again, with the Medicaid funding, Medicare funding, a bunch of other things. So that's put a stall on the Senate side. So now I saw this morning, they don't think it's going to be done by July for, uh, fourth, by the fourth of July. So I guess the president will be a little cranky about that. So we'll see how that goes. But yeah, welcome to Altus. All right. So I don't have anything other than.
So then the other, oh, sorry. Were you done with?
No, that was all I have for the state and federal legislation piece.
And then the other meetings we have, we have a work session on July first at one for emergency services. They have a revision to their resolution that's from nineteen seventy-nine. Yes, nineteen seventy-nine, resolution that they are cleaning up. So that'll be a discussion of that draft for the board to review and the policy as well.
I agree.
I won't tell you how old I am. And we have at two o'clock then on the first, the discussion, a work session for the board to discuss the site selection for the, for the county jail.
For the lack thereof.
There will be a county.
Yeah, but no, no, the site, I'm talking about the lack, lack of, I've been, I've been driving around a lot, man, and I've been finding all sorts of good spots. You know, so it's just getting the engineering assessment for feasibility for. But I think off of a major highway like eighty or eighty-two or something like that, we got to, we got to be close to something like that. I just don't see.
We'll have a discussion.
We'll, we'll have a discussion on that, but.
And now do you want to go back to the jail district?
Oh, yeah, we got to do that. We got to do that. So.
Do you?
So.
Or do you, supervisor, cause he wanted to say.
Okay, so we are on this one. So the gender for Cochise County Jail District and we're on this draft.
Yes, and on the back page.
So, yeah, I could say the consent agenda, what did we say, Madam Lowenheim, as part of the discussion for the consent agenda, I can show my slides.
Hmm, item number three.
Oh, is that what we said? Okay, that's fine. That works. So we can adjourn the regular session and then.
Well, you just go into.
So we can just do a motion to go in executive session?
I wanted to clarify for everybody, what I'm suggesting is that we go into executive session right now to review, review the draft ballot language. Because when we come in, when we have this action item for vote on Tuesday, the board is going to need to make a decision one way or the other because that, the ballot language is due November second. So my intent was.
July sixth.
July, gosh, I am just, I do that all the time. Whenever I'm reading is what I say. July second is when the ballot language is due.
Okay, so you want to go in and basically go into the other room right now?
If that's okay with the attorney, is that, are we appropriate to do that?
That is, I don't see an issue with it.
Okay.
Okay. So a motion to go in the executive session. Let's just start the other meeting in the other room.
No, we can't have. This is posted.
Okay.
First need to gobble in.
So, so.
We're not in a jail district.
Yeah, we're just doing, we're just doing the, the agenda. So we, we would look at the.
We're in a work session.
So we don't have any issue with the consent agenda, right? It's just the minutes and the demands. And then the only thing we're talking about is agenda item number three. So get a motion to go in executive session to get legal counsel on the current draft resolution.
Did Mr. Crosby want to say some stuff in the public first before we?
Yeah, 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 I guess. So let's just go to three and then you can talk about whatever your slides are.
Okay, I'm kind of confused. So.
So we're, we're on the jail district agenda draft. Item number three. Yeah, the consent agenda is just, you know, the standard routine stuff. We're on number three. So we're, we're going to. Three is from Tuesday at the jail district meeting.
Okay.
We will adopt the resolution that's required to be provided to the elections department so they can start doing the stuff for the ballot, what will appear on the ballot.
So you want to hear a motion for number three?
Well, no, 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 no. We could talk about what you want to talk about now. Show your slides. And then when you're done with that, we will do a motion to go in executive session to discuss and review the language with our attorney.
Okay. Madam Lowenheim, anytime you want to put any of those slides up, I will be ready to talk about it. Okay, so in the, in the top portion there, this is, this is what everybody saw in that, in that proposition one, three, two, whenever it was. So the way, in my opinion, they got around this for, for special districts in, in Title forty-eight is by calling it a question instead of an initiative and a referendum. And so the, when, when we've talked about this issue before, we said, yeah, this is, this is really bogus. However, the court didn't address that.
Right.
And, and so that's, that's one point. And so the next one is, in, in the top paragraph, I'm just going to read my copy here. The board supervisors of a county may adopt a resolution to establish a county jail district, et cetera, et cetera. So in the, in the first sentence there, it says this, this district is not being established by that resolution that it's talking about right there. It isn't, it isn't established until the district shall be established on voter approval of a property tax or excise tax. So it's time-wise, it appears to me that it's out of order to what actually happens.
So to dump on my poor attorney here, the fact that they did hold the election in May, is that satisfying then?
So essentially, this is, so we're talking about Proposition one, I want to say it's one thirty-two here, which does not even apply to the jail district statute at all. That only applies to statewide referenda in other tax measures that are proposed by the legislature for a statewide vote. So this is a special taxing district. And this apply, there are specific statutes that apply to the election to, to propose an excise tax. It's proposed by this board. It's not done by the legislature. So two completely unlike statutes here that we're looking at. So under ARS forty-eight four thousand twenty-two, which applies to this jail district, the jail district, uh, actually only needs a majority of the vote. And so Proposition one thirty-two didn't apply to this, and there's other legislative history that, that shows that the term majority, as it's used in forty-eight forty twenty-two, is a unique term that applies only to this. It does not apply, uh, to tax, to measures under.
All right, I would, again, and I got it, uh, our other attorney, Mr. La Sota also agrees with that interpretation. And we also got an opinion from, uh, alleged counsel on that, Gail Griffin, uh, got an interpretation, so. Now, the theory is, I don't know if it was true or not, the theory is that when they were drafting that ballot proposition to refer to the ballot, they, they knew that there were a lot of special districts, school districts, jail districts, flood districts, all these other districts that they did not want to touch, because there would be mass opposition to getting that passed. Because if they'd included all these districts and went to the ballot with that, they would have developed opposition to that, and it would have probably been voted down. So they decided to just go for the legislative and ballot referral to statewide initiatives to get that going, because they thought they could get that, and they did. They did get that. Um, but they deliberately left all the districts off. Now, we have folks who are seeing that proposition to have broad applicability to the entire state, every little potential district, every little charter city, every little, uh, thing. So that's, that's what, uh, we're refer, referring to here. I think Mr. Crosby's point is the courts need to weigh
Well, it is not gonna change anything, and that, that's my point to who, those who we, uh, are, are friends, basically, that, that point out this business about the constitutional amendment. And it's like what you said and like what Dylan said, it's a matter of how much opposition is there and how much support is there.
Right.
That's what it comes down to. And there is not enough support for their point of view. And that, that's, that's the point I'm making here.
Yeah.
So again, let me, let me just go onto the first sentence of paragraph B, just to point out the ambiguity of this.
Yeah.
"The resolution shall set a date for the hearing on the resolution."
So this goes back to, this goes back to what we're trying to do for, in the Board of Supervisors meeting, with that resolution for the continued establishment. So the previous board back in twenty twenty-two did create, adopt a resolution as per A to establish a jail district. They had, well, they had the public hearing, then they had the, and Tom, you were there, you approved the, the establishment of the jail district, and then the district, and then the district shall be established on voter approval of property, of the, of the property or sales tax, so this is.
Okay. So the point that I was making with you, and when we were talking about this, is can there be a board without a district? And I, I say, it's, it's, it's illogical. So all the stuff is extremely ambiguous. So let's just take a look at the, uh, the last two sentences of B. "The board shall meet at the time and place fixed for the hearing. At the hearing, the board shall hear all persons, yada, yada, yada."
Mm-hmm.
They're not talking about the, the jail district board. They're talking about the Board of Supervisors, because, because there's no jail district board in that whole section.
Correct. That's why we're doing it under the Board of Supervisors.
Correct.
Okay, I sort of pointed that out, because they're ambiguous. Because, well, why didn't they say Board of Supervisors? I don't know, but they didn't. And then they come back in, in D, it says, "The Board of Supervisors must pay yada, yada, yada." So it would be very easy for somebody who, who wanted to just use this for their own nefarious purposes to say, well, they're talking about the, the jail district board here, of course, right? And in, in my opinion, you can't have jail district board without a district, in my opinion.
I promise, we've had so many attorneys stare at this statute for hours, just going through and making sure.
We had, we had our two counsel, our own counsel look at it, not just the county attorney, right? So we had the county attorney looking at it, and then we had La Sota looking at it, we had Johnson, Johnson looking at it, we had all, and it's.
Can we move on to the next one, which was the agreement?
I'm just making sure we're not.
Okay.
We're still okay.
But to me, it seems that we're going to discuss the meaning of statutes and asking the Deputy Attorney to give an opinion on that. That's why we're going to.
Okay, but this, we've already talked.
Yeah, this is, this is just.
Can you scroll it up so we can read number two? Okay, this was the agreement that the Board of Supervisors agreed on and are, are agreed to disagree in this case. It says, number two, "The plaintiff's content that a supermajority, yes, vote of sixty percent of those, of those voting was required but not achieved to enact the, the jail district. Do defendants, that's us, do not take that position and expect the issue to be resolved by the courts, not the Board of Supervisors."
Correct.
Okay? And could, could, could we scroll down to the signatures now? Perfect. Thank you so much. Thank you for your kind assistance, Ms. Lowenheim. That concludes my comments.
Thank you.
Oh, that, you got the one that wasn't finished yet. La Sota's signature wasn't our.
Well, yeah, there's a, there's a first page, and it looks like it's been through about twenty fax machines.
And they're, they're available.
Yeah, so that's, that's the issue. We, we gotta abide by the settlement agreement. All right, because the judge dismissed the case on the grounds that we were gonna, both sides were gonna abide by that agreement. So we're bound by that. So again, what we had told attorneys to discuss was that if Mr. Luchance wants to go to the courts with this, he would have to wait until after the next election, because this one has been dismissed, right? So the judge had, he dismissed with prejudice, right? I believe.
I would need to re-.
We mutually agreed.
Right, right. So, so, but, but I'm talking about the, this is where the lawyers come in. The legal mumbo jumbo here is we had a lawsuit. That lawsuit was settled. The judge approved the settlement and dismissed the lawsuit with prejudice, so we cannot bring that lawsuit back, and Mr. Luchance cannot bring that lawsuit. That lawsuit's old. So he has to create a new harm, which is the next election, right?
We hope not.
Well, it's his decision whether he wants to or not, but theoretically, the next election we have, and say that the jail district passes with, if it passes with sixty-one, he's screwed, because he can't bring the lawsuit, because it passed with sixty-one percent of the vote. But if it passes with fifty-three percent of the vote, he's welcome to file another lawsuit to reignite his argument that you need sixty percent, and then that will go through the courts fine and damn to.
Well, I, I, at this point, I want to avail you of the option of going to executive session to discuss the.
Yeah, but we already, this was already kind of, you know, in the settlement agreement, this was in the.
Talking about potential litigation.
Well, oh, oh, I talked about, but I mean, that's the. No, that's what I'm saying. So when we do this, this ballot language, he, he's still welcome to sue the county. I mean, I'm not.
Just don't waste any advice.
Yeah, it's just, it's just that, that was the, that was the agreement with the attorneys, was that he would, and that's why he signed the settlement agreement, you know.
That's why I wanted this public, so that those, those documents that were up there were for everybody's.
Yeah, uh, and, well, the, the, the settlement agreement is public too.
I know.
Yeah, so that's what I'm saying, everything.
Big board.
Oh, it's on the big board. Oh, okay. But I mean, that's, that's the thing. So, you know, he signed the settlement agreement, we signed the settlement agreement. That was the agreement. That law, that lawsuit, as far as I'm concerned, is done. That's the point I was trying to make. So if he wants to challenge any of that, there's a method to do that, and he can do that. He's a, it's a free country. He's got a right to do it, and he can do it, but I, I, based on the four attorneys that I spoke with, including our county attorney, um, all of them seem to be in agreement that that is a long road to hope. And he probably will not have much success with that, because the impact, and, and just thinking from the perspective of judges, we've had this discussion before, they would be screwing up every school district, every special district, every charter city. Every, every one of those in the state would now require sixty percent, and that will create a lot of.
That's why they will not be in his favor.
That's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying. He will not have a high likelihood.
Because they run for office too.
Right.
So can we go back to the ballot language?
All right, now we need to go into executive session for that. So if Mr. Crosby would entertain a motion to go to executive session.
Well, as soon as I can find what I wish.
Oh, yeah, we gotta find that, uh, part, what is it? Title thirty-eight, uh.
Okay, so do we need to do any of these, like, item number one or two or not?
No, just three.
Number three. You're not, we're not in a meeting. I mean, we're in a.
We just, we just gotta do a motion to go in executive session to get lead counsel, and we got, you, you have the title? Because it's not on here. Oh, is it on here?
Wait, I want to make sure. Did, for this work session, did we first notice the public that we may go into executive session for this? We didn't. Okay, so that, that's my concern right now. It's only a work session, and so I just checked over the agenda. That wasn't originally noticed the public, so we can't do it here. We could do it at the race for me.
Oh, okay.
We can't, well, we can't.
On Tuesday.
Exactly. We didn't originally notice the public that we go into executive session.
That's why you're here. That's why you're here. Good job. Thank you for keeping us out of trouble. So we will not go into executive session.
And we will not talk about.
And we will not talk about it. We will wait till Tuesday, and then go into.
Miss Gomez.
And, yeah, Miss Gomez will be here too.
Yeah, that'll be good.
Which will be good. So I don't have anything else. Have they got anything else? Good job today. Good job today. Where did she go? Oh. Good job today, keeping us, keeping us straight. And let's adjourn.